Good evening and welcome to our regular Board of Select meeting for April 6, 2022. If you all could please rise to say the pleasure. Mr. Schultz, will you lead us, lead us, please?
I would like to testify on the United States of America and to recall that we are citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't believe there are any additional agenda or consent calendar items. They say none. Delegations, is there anyone that would like to address the board? Mr. Schultz, please come up. Your name and address, sir, please. You know how to do that. You know the routine.
I, if I can remember where I live. Mike Schultz, Lewis Lane, East Lime. I know that budget discussions is not on tonight's agenda, but with your approval, I'd just like to make a couple comments.
That's all right.
A great deal has changed over the last month, making it very difficult to swallow the proposed budget increase of $2.4 million, or 4.59% over the last year, coupled with the town general government increase of 5.06% over 2021 and 22 budget. This follows the renovation of three schools and the purchase and renovation of the public safety building. And to me, the spending has gotten completely out of hand and will also be, soon be unsustainable by the taxpayers. We have to keep in mind that over 40% of the people that receive their salaries from East Lime live somewhere else. We don't get that money back. They don't spend it here. You get paid here and it's bye-bye. People have been intending to put their kids through school, and as soon as they finish that, they're bye-bye. And they're leaving us holding the bag with a whole lot of school expansions. And so I know one family's got four of them. They all graduated, now they're moving. And that's one of many. So that's basically all I want to say about the budget idea. I hope, for God's sakes, with all that's going on, keep that in mind, and I hope the public comes out and gives their opinion, one way or the other, but at least do something and come out unbooted on it. With respect to the ARP funds, don't waste the money. I want you to be very careful regarding the one item that I picked out of there, which is the recall to the water tank on Boston Post Road. It looks like it needs a lot of attention on the outside, but there is a concern. And the concern is, is called microbial corrosion caused by tiny bacteria that eats metal. I worked for NU. We had a tank there that started leaking. It wasn't corroded from the outside, it was being eaten out from the inside. So if you're gonna go out and paint that tank, you may be putting lipstick on a pig. So either an ultrasound or really whatever you need to do to have some bit of testing from the external before we go and do what you have to do. Because my understanding is, you're painting the outside and maybe you're gonna service the inside. But if you're gonna do that, it could show some very significant other, and I don't know if that $750,000 that you set aside, man ain't gonna touch it if, if you've got microbial corrosion in there. That's individual little patches, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mike, are you real, we can't, we're not supposed to cap it now, but I can have the utility engineer who's in charge of that project reach out to you if you don't mind me giving him your phone number.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Rogan is familiar with it, by the way.
Anyone else like to address the board prior to the meeting under delegations? Seeing none, we'll continue with our agenda and move for the approval of the minutes of the March 16, 2022 calendar.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 16, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roseanne. Any other comments or corrections?
I have a couple of corrections, actually, myself. Let's see, on page, page three of the minutes, first paragraph at the top of the page, I'd say one, two, three, four lines down, basically. After that comma there, it should really read, but that perhaps quite a few of them. And then I have a second insertion, the word they after and, between and and did, because my comment was not to get in the heads of the business community, it was to us, to make the point that it wasn't, it wasn't entirely clear that business, why businesses weren't necessarily applying for ARP assistance. And it was, it's a surmising here that it is perhaps because they had gotten their CARES Act funding, and it wasn't me saying that they weren't eligible, it's they themselves thinking they were not eligible. So it's, you know, kind of an important distinction, I think. I can give.
Yeah, why don't you give these to Sandy for correction?
And I have another similar in the next paragraph, a similar clarification about the documentation from, from the town of East Windsor. I'd give that to Sandy. And then the only other substantive thing is.
I think we'd like to know what it is.
Oh, so sorry.
If we're gonna vote on it.
Okay. So basically, in that, in that one, two, third paragraph, third paragraph, so basically the documentation in question that the attorneys were reviewing is the follow-up documentation. We've gotten other documentation from, from East Windsor, for example, their sample application form, et cetera, et cetera. But the key thing there is that the memorandum of understanding, as they called it, or an agreement, is what the town attorney was, was reviewing. And it got a little murky in the way it was written as to which documents we're talking about.
Well, how would you like to have it reworked?
Okay, so I would say that sentence, our town attorneys are reviewing the East Windsor follow-up documents, and we'll report back as to if we can utilize these documents for our town. And then the next sentence will begin, follow-up and reporting is a big part of this process, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. And the last thing?
And the last thing, on the top of page five, I believe it's, it's motion 13, I believe it should be Roseanne Hardy and Anne Santoro will be on that.
Exactly, that should be Roseanne Hardy.
Yes. And knock door.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
Okay, is there, Anne, since you moved, are you okay with the corrections that you requested?
Yes.
And Roseanne, you, did you second it, Roseanne?
Yes.
Okay, you okay with the corrections?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the minutes as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carriage unanimously, consent calendar.
Okay. Move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting minutes of, for the regular meetings, sorry, of April 6, 2022, in the amount of $30,352.62.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, carriage unanimously. Moving on, special purpose, the FEMA boardwalk repairs, we'll be doing that at the next meeting. Bill Share and Dave Putnam were the two that put this together, and Bill is on vacation. Dave was gonna present in his place, but Dave took two tests at home the other day, and he passed both of them with flying colors, so he's not in for the rest of this week. So we obviously know that, what home test he passed. He's under the weather a little bit, so we will put that off till next week. That's, they weren't planning on doing that till possibly the end of the summer, anyway, so there's really no urgency on that, anyway. Moving on, the next one is discussion and possible action on a pension obligation. Here again, I think Anna can speak to this as well, but Justin Porter was moved from the union to a non-union position several months ago. We had, we had approved that, had been gone through the unions to where he became a, basically considered part of, you know, the unaffiliated, so he's no longer in a union, he's a salaried employee. But for the years he was in the union, he would have accumulated roughly towards his retirement about the amount you see there, about $13,090. Anna can explain, if you'd like, how we came up with that number. Normally, we had something similar with Julie Wilson a while ago, because she went from union to unaffiliated, but she was already fully vested, so there was no question about her, because she moved from the union to, to a defined benefit, to a defined contribution when you become into a supervisory salaried position. So Julie automatically took it, because she was vetted.
Vested.
What?
Vested.
Vested, thank you. I couldn't think of that word. Thank you. Justin did not have the time to do that, but this would allow, and we have never come across this before, where someone got into that position, because in the past, when everybody was still under the defined benefit about 15 or so years ago, didn't make any difference. But now, this will allow him to move forward and, you know, not lose the money that would have been set aside for him while he was in the union ranks. This is something that we know we're gonna have to discuss moving forward with union contracts as well. But that's what that is, basically to allow him to keep the money and move it over to his defined contribution account that he now has vice to defined benefit. Anna, do you have anything to add?
I think you did a good job at, you know, making the points. If anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And this was vetted through the labor attorney. We made sure, it was on last time, but Nick, our labor, Nick Grelow, our labor attorney was away. He wasn't able to get, review it, and the language in there has been crafted by him, so. Any questions? Okay. Motion.
Okay, so move the following. Whereas Justin Porter was hired on January 1, 2016, as a Department of Public Works employee, Department of Public Works employees are represented by UPSU. As an UPSU-represented Department of Public Works employee, Mr. Porter was eligible for the town's defined benefit pension plan. Vesting in the town's defined benefit pension plan occurs upon 10 years of employment with the town as a member of the UPSU bargaining unit. Whereas effective on August 16, 2021, Mr. Porter was promoted to highway superintendent. The highway superintendent position is a non-union position. As a non-union employee, Mr. Porter is no longer eligible for the town's defined benefit pension plan. At the time of the promotion, Mr. Porter was not vested in the town's defined benefit pension plan. Whereas the town approves a one-time contribution of $13,090.13 for Mr. Porter to the town's defined contribution pension plan. Said contribution represents 5% of Mr. Porter's base wages during the period from January 1, 2016, to August 15, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, carriage unanimously. Next, moving on, the capital improvement plan that Anna has given us tonight, to, Anna, I'll let you take it from here.
So this is our annual capital improvement plan. We look at what we, we think our needs will be over the next 10 years, but more importantly, the most important year is the 22, 23 year, because that's the year that we're going forward with on our new budget. I will point out that items that are contained within the plan will, many of them require supplemental, even though they're included in the plan and the plan gets adopted, they require supplemental actions to actually get approved for us to move forward. So, and then also, the plan is color-coded relative to sources of funding, and the sources of funding are identified on the last page of, of the plan. So starting, the first department is the assessors department, revaluation. While we're currently in, you know, the completion, well, actually, yeah, in the completion stages of the last revale that was, was done, we, you know, we're, in another five years, we're gonna have to do a statistical update revale, and then another five years from that, we'll do another full revale. So what we did is we looked at estimated costs for those items, how much funding we have remaining in the CNRE fund for this purpose, and just kind of charted it out, you know, for the next nine years, anyway, so that when, when we need the funding to do the various components, we would, we would have the resources available. So next year, you'll see the 45,000. And then in the building department, there is just introducing, digitizing the records and a software upgrade in, in, you know, the subsequent years plan. Engineering, this is for the CAD software and survey equipment that they use. And again, this is an item that we fund in CNRE so that when, you know, when they need to update what they have, they have the resources available. And actually, the assessor, the revale, and the CAD are in brown, and that's the color code for the general fund subsidy to the CNRE fund. Next, we have information technology. We do have computer replacements for every year of the plan. We have, we maintain a list, and every year we replace and update the oldest equipment that we have. Then we also have funding for a town, the townwide replacement of servers. For those of you who have been around a while, you may recall back, the last three to five years, we had one of our servers that just kind of like sizzled. So now, we, we keep a reserve so that when we need to replace the servers, we have the resources available. In building maintenance, we have a couple of projects that are highlighted in purple, and this is designating using the LoSiP funds that we receive from the state for these projects. Townwide garage door repairs and replacement for $30,000, as well as public safety buildings, repairs and improvements that may be needed in the next year. And then the next couple of items are annual CNRE subsidy items, the HVAC pump replacements townwide, and also various townwide roof replacements. Next, we have emergency management, and we have a new item in there for $2,000, the AED defibrillators. So we have various of those units throughout the town building, and, and they have, like, different components of the defibrillators have expiration dates. And so this is to have, for us to have a resource to replace those components when necessary. In the past, we've budgeted this in the emergency management budget, and what happens is, we either don't have enough, or if we don't spend it during the fiscal year, they want to carry it over. So it just made more sense for us to fund it through the CNRE fund, because that fund carries over from year to year. The next item is actually highlighted in red, and it's one of the ARP proposals for the town side of government, which is the software that they would like to purchase. Next, we have the police department. And again, in this department, we have an item that's set to be funded by CNRE funds, the funding for the East Lime Waterford boat that we share. We also have an item that's being proposed using ARPA funds, the state radio communication system for the $466,000. And then the next item is in blue, and that is for the two new vehicles that they would propose to purchase next year. The blue indicates that it's gonna be run through the acquisition plan, but also that the payments will be charged to the CNRE fund. The source of funds in CNRE are the receipts that we receive when the police do the outside jobs, we have a vehicle charge. The amount represented in the CIP is what, what we're anticipating the full cost of the items to be, but the, you know, the payments are spread out over five years. Next, we have Nyantik Fire Department, and their items are all included in the general fund department 724. And they have thermal imaging camera, assorted fire hose, their SCBA cylinder replacements, and four sets of turnout gear. And then following Nyantik Fire, we also have Flanders Fire, and they, they as well have SCBA replacements, some, their firefighting gear, as well as assorted fire hose. In public works department, we do have a few items that are proposed to be funded by the ARP funds. Replace, upgrade the town hall and air handler system for 150,000. Upgrades to the HVAC at Field Services Building, that is actually 270,000. I kind of put the trash truck and the, I reversed the numbers for those two items.
All of them the same, just, yeah.
Yeah. The, the next item is the trash truck. And then the next item is the vehicles that they plan to purchase in the acquisition plan next year. It's the full value, 470. And if you look on the last page, it itemizes what they are, the trash truck, a new chipper, and replacing a pickup. However, we expect that with the approval of using ARPA funds to purchase a new trash truck, that we would remove the funding that we need for that trash truck in the acquisition plan.
How, how much would that be?
So the, so here in the CIP, it's listed at the, you know, the full value. The funding that we have included in the general fund budget is, I believe, $63,800 for that. So that would be something that the, the Board of Finance would be able to make a reduction. Next, in purple, we have a couple of items. We have lift jacks for the highway maintenance garage, and also rebuilding Plant's Dam. And then we have the annual road replacement pro, road maintenance program of 850,000. That is a bonded item, and that is also an item that would come before the boards again for approval. In commission on aging, it's actually relative to three departments. It has to do with the East Lime Community Center. There's a request for ARPA funds to do a feasibility study at the building to see what can be done for, relative to space needs. Everybody's bursting at the steam, the seams in that building. Next, we have parks and recreation. Again, there's an item in this department to replace the maintenance-style dump truck in the acquisition plan. And then we have a few items proposed using the ARPA funds. New placescape improvements at McCook's Park and Paret's Park, replacing the water fountains at all the parks, and including pet ball stations, restroom enhancements in the parks, and also an open space master plan at the Darrell Pond property. And then in the townwide department, we have $25,000 as, for town, time, townwide projects, and that is to use CNRE funds. And then the last department is education, and so they have a proposal of 1.1,180,000 in bonded projects, and then to purchase a new tractor that will be run through the acquisition plan, and then also their, they have their annual technology plan. I will comment, I believe included in your packets was a sheet of the Board of Ed proposed CIP, right? Because when they, when this board received the budget book from the Board of Ed, that number was much larger. And so between your presentation and the presentation to the Board of Finance, they made some amendments to it. And so that sheet that you have attached is what their amendments are.
So Anna, these items are, have been taken out, or being addressed and taken out of that longer list of items that we were first given.
Correct.
By Board of Education.
That's correct.
Questions for Anna? One, I gave Bill mine, so I'm having to go back here. Well, that's all right, with Sandy out, I was Sandy today, so I can blame myself for doing all this, too. You know, one of the things under the fire departments, too, and Mr. Schultz had brought this up to me once, too, about are the fire departments coordinating, purchasing that? And first, it's the thermal imaging camera, it's a, it's a line item under both for the improvement plan, but Flanders didn't do it this year. This was the year for, so it's, both of them aren't hitting us at the same time. The hose repair is pretty much something you have to do, but, you know, they do try to very much, if you look at that, try to make it so they both aren't hitting us for everything at the same time. They do try to stagger it the best they can, so that we're not, you know, they're not over burning us. So that is something that the two fire departments do, work with each other to make sure they Any questions or comments on the capital improvement plan?
I just have a question on some of the, I would like to defibrillator and the boat maintenance. You don't carry that out year after year. Is there a reason why some things are carried out? Or, I understand we're focused on this here tonight.
Right.
I just didn't know if they were, is there a reason why you don't have that?
Yeah, so the, for the boat, it, I, I had that conversation with the chief, and so that's a coordinate, coordinated effort with us and Waterford, and we kind of like stopped at what our current needs are, and, you know, he recognizes he needs to go over and have a conversation with Waterford. But when he did ask them, he, they did say that after this, there was nothing else, but I think that's more of a work in progress. The defibrillators, I, it's, at this point, let's kind of see how the first year plays out, and we, we get to the budget cycle next year, we'll be in a better position to see, to see where we are. I know the Health and Safety Committee, they have the list of where all the defibrillators are, and they also keep track of what the expiration dates are on the actual units themselves, along with, I think it's the batteries that have, are what you have to really pay attention to with regards to the expiration dates.
I have a couple of questions.
Roseanne.
Under 113, the building maintenance, so scheduled for next year would be the garage door repairs and replacement. And what building is that applied to?
Well, I think, as I, I understand it, it's, it's townwide, so it would be at our field services facility, as well as the fire departments.
And painting of the outside of the community center, I see that Mr. Bregaw is here this evening, but is this something that would be done in-house, or is this something that we would outsource to have done? I'm just wondering about the $30,000 we give.
Is Ms. Bregaw still here?
He just walked back in. Joe, Aunt, Roseanne had a question regarding the.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, Roxbury.
Could you come over to the mic, please? Go.
Joe Bregaw, Public Works Director. The question is which doors, the garage doors, was, the Flanders Firehouse is in need, 12 Roxbury, those garage doors are in rough shape. We have some work to be done at the Field Services Building. So it is, as Anna was saying, townwide, but those are the needs right now as far as the garage doors, you know, the springs and all the parts and associated, but that's what we're looking at.
Is this the part of the building that is being used for cold storage?
Where, 12, 12 Roxbury? Um, yes. There's one garage door that we, it didn't even go up the other day, and we had to get someone to get the equipment out of it, because it was stuck. So, yes, in the cold storage, but it's not gonna be that whole building, it's just gonna be the, the unnecessary repairs. But the Flanders Fire. the necessary repairs, but the Flanders Firehouse especially, because obviously those doors go up and down all the time.
And you want to know about the painting? Who's going to, is it?
That's okay, I just saw that that's not until twenty-four, so.
Yeah.
When it gets closer.
You can ask then.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one. Anna, under Education, nine nine nine, that's on page three, for the five hundred thousand dollars for the technology plan, the payment for twenty-two, twenty-three, and then to be determined for the future. So basically, is that, refresh my recollection, is that the last, the last of that, those payments?
So what that is, is for the new technology equipment that they plan to purchase in next fiscal year, a half a million dollars.
Okay. So that's not going back like two years when we bought our, all the technology, you know, in order, during COVID? So that's not part of that? This is, this is forward-looking, is what I'm asking?
Right, this is, this is new. So the way the acquisition plan works is we're doing a five-year payment plan. So it kind of, it kind of like revolves. So by, by including the various departments in it every year, you start with year one, and then each year you add to it, but you're also paying off part of something that you've done in the past. So you, you know, kind of like trying to keep it as level across as you can going forward.
So we, so then, I guess my question is, we have paid in full for the, for the tech, not yet, for the technology purchase, for the COVID purposes, when I was sitting on Board of Finance at that time?
So this is probably, we're probably going into either year two or three of those payments.
Okay.
So then we, you know, we add, we add to it. It's kind of like, you know, you start and you keep building up, and then it go, you know, your first year gets paid off. So you're dropping prior years off all the time as you're adding new years on. I think that's probably the, you know, the, you know, a way to look at it.
Any other questions?
Just a minute, I just want to make sure I'm in the right place here. Under Parks and Rec, seventy-five thousand dollars for pet ball stations.
So the seventy-five thousand is to replace all the water fountains at the parks?
Oh, I see, it goes.
It's like two lines of information.
Yes, okay, thank you. I just wondered what they were going to be drinking if we're seventy-five thousand.
Any comments? Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital improvement plan as submitted.
Oh, well, you want me to fix that?
And as amended.
As amended.
As amended. And forward to the Board of Finance.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Weber. Any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, and it carries unanimously. Moving on, this is, happens every, about every four years, Anna, correct? We have that fifty, there's actually a fifty-third payroll week that year because of the way the years, you know, the pay, you know, the paydays come across. And, you know, there are several positions that have to be addressed by this. So we need to transfer from contingency, where we do have the funds, twenty-five thousand and ten dollars and fifty cents to cover that. So, and again, Anna has the worksheet for this. If it moves forward, I will be abstaining because I am on the first line of the worksheet, so.
I'll move to approve a special appropriation and transfer from account zero-one dash zero-one dash one twenty dash two hundred dash five hundred, parentheses contingency, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and seventy-nine cents per, is that, we, in the, that's different than the twenty-five thousand, ten, fifty-seven, so.
The correct number is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Okay, so backtrack there. A contingency account in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and seventy-nine cents, per the attached wage analysis schedule, to fund the additional pay week in various accounts, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments?
Just a question, because we have, we have to do this every couple of years. Is there a way that we can capture this during the budget cycle so that we don't have to do this?
Yeah, and you know what? Actually, I apologize for not catching it, because I do, when we start out the budget process, I do count all the weeks, and I obviously missed it for this year's budget.
She even says it in the kind of write-off, she kind of throws herself under the bus a little bit, so. Okay, all those in favor, the motion, signifying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and as I said, I will abstain on it. Moving on, next thing is for transfer to the Building Department wages from contingency as well. What says in the agenda is thirteen thousand, but I see it's seventeen thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. And here again, we have two part-time business, building officials right now, as we indicated, the chief building official resigned a little over a month ago, but his resignation was effective the first of April, so he was compensated for that. But here again, his budget request last year was reduced, and the need for inspections and that was high. There is also a lot of revenue to cover the cost of this as well. His office has drawn in a lot of that, so this would be to fund the building officials through the end of the year. Anna, anything to add to that?
Well, it's actually two budget accounts within the department. One is the part-time building officials, and then also the admin clerical account, because the part-time employee, you know, individual in the department is, has been working an average of twenty-four to thirty-three hours a week, and, you know, for a couple of reasons, you know, the, obviously, you know, the demand in the department, and then also, there's, there are two admin support employees, and so if the other employee is out of the office, they have the part-timer come in more hours, and so, that's the reason for working the average twenty-four to thirty-three hours a week. So I just kind of looked at it, and I did the estimate based on twenty-eight and a half hours. I figured, you know, that would, you know, will make that work till the end of the year.
All right, so move to approve a special appropriation and transfer in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars from account zero-one dash zero-one dash one twenty dash two hundred dash five hundred, parentheses contingency as follows. Eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars to account zero-one dash zero-one dash one oh four dash one hundred dash two twelve, parentheses building official, and five thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars to account zero-one dash zero-one dash one oh four dash one hundred dash three eleven, parentheses admin slash clerical, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Is there a second? Give this one to Dan. And any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, and it carries unanimously. Moving on to all business discussion, possible action, the American Rescue Plan appropriations. This is the culmination of a lot of work, to say the least, and thank you to Ann Chakello and Ann Santoro for all their hard work. One of the members, Lee Edwards, is here. Thank him for all his work, and everyone that isn't here for all they did to move this forward. This was exhausting on their part, I know for a fact, and I think it did a good job of addressing, a very good job, of addressing the small businesses and nonprofits that came forward and requested funding. I think you did a really good job. You did a comment with the forum to rate everybody, as well as addressing the needs of the town as well. And all of these have been vetted and said, okay, a thumbs up from the town attorney, not only for the town, but for all the small businesses and nonprofits. One of the things that was omitted in the thing was the thumbs up for the drop box that Sandy had requested for the front of the town hall, for people dropping off their taxes, not rather the box we have out there now with a cable on it and subject to the weather and so forth like that. Tracy did say she sent me a lever, I didn't get a chance to download it before I got here, but she did give me a verbal that that is definitely covered as well. So Anna, anything you have to add before we move forward?
No, I think, I think you've pretty much covered it. Tracy worked on this with Anna, and to some extent myself. I'm coming up with two resolutions, because there's a, there's an amount of money left over from our first installment of funding of ARP. We will get the second installment, May and June, probably June.
Late June.
Late June, yeah.
Too real.
Let's get, yeah, I can't be too optimistic here, but it should, it will come, but it will just come later than maybe wish for. So you, one resolution addresses that scenario, and then the second resolution addresses the rest. And, and as you recall in the reports, there are the two exhibits, Exhibits Nine, actually Nine A.
Yeah, I put them, I put them inside everyone's folder, the two resolutions.
So those are the basis of the resolutions.
Yeah. And a good, to point out, too, is prioritizing these was difficult, too, because how do you decide? Because some people who will be approved, if it does happen, will have to wait until that second installment comes. And I think with Anna, Tracy, and Ann Santoro, they did a good job of figuring what was really necessary, because right now, we have three hundred and forty thousand dollars in there for the garbage truck. Joe Bregaw's got a good chance right now, if it gets approved quickly, to maybe save about twenty-five thousand dollars on that. So we thought that should get a higher priority. Same thing with the air handlers in town hall. I can attest to the fact that they're not good, and this allows him to address this rather quickly. We also, the software for emergency management, the Darrell Pond area, the drop boxes I just mentioned, some equipment for the fire marshal, some stuff at the library, the contingency for the ARP administrative costs and attorney fees, and some contingency, which we'll go into that, because they had talked about the seventy-five. But this addresses all of the, the remaining four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars will address all the small business and nonprofit requests. And it does specify that they're going to have to, you know, you know, qualify what, and quantify what they use their funds for, so they won't be able to, they'll have to fill out a form that will be coming forward to approve in a couple of weeks. We don't have to do that tonight because the money won't be approved, so that they just can't, if it's approved at town meeting, say in two weeks, they can't show up at Anna's door the next morning and say, where's my check? We don't have a rush on that, like we did on the test kits and that a few months ago. So any questions for Ann or Anna regarding this? And we have a list of, and it's been published, and it was with the agenda of those people getting the funds through the, through the plant. Any questions before we start moving the resolutions forward?
I thought that we were just approving the town requests tonight, where you're looking to approve the.
Yes.
Community services as well?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry, I thought that we were just doing the town requests for tonight. I don't know if I got that impression.
So to address your question or concern, Roseanne, if you, if you take a look at the first resolution, and it points out that there's one million, sixty thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and change, which is that amount that is available until we get our second installment. So looking at that amount, and then realizing that we have addressed the small businesses and nonprofits, and you take that four hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, and then what's remaining is, you know, town items, you know, the garbage truck, the air handlers, and then smaller items, the software, et cetera, down, down the list, kind of in pri, sort of in that existing priority order, but just the sum of the smaller items, rather than partially fund something, that was the thinking there. And then the remaining items are in the second resolution for when we do receive that second installment, and then we can address some of these other items. And so, for example, we know that in Water and Sewer, the Niantic Sewer Pump Station is, it is definitely a priority item, but while everything else is going on, they can go out to bid, like while we're waiting for that money to come in, and then that project can start as they're finishing, let's say, well, five. So some of that thinking went in, you know, went into some of that decision-making, because, for example, if you were to stick that in there, they wouldn't be working on it anyway right away, and then it would, it would eat up six hundred thousand dollars.
With, for instance, on the second request, with the restrooms at Parks and Rec, that won't be able to be addressed until the fall, because they'd never be able to address that prior to the busy time starting, and the social workers and that, those are planned for funding starting July first, anyway. And the upgrades of the HVAC at Public Work at the Public Safety Building and so forth, and the communications, those are things that wouldn't necessarily have started before the date, anyway. So we figured the, we figured the small business nonprofits that did suffer or ready to, or could use some recovery, it was best to try and get them the resources moving forward. For instance, VFW post, not the VFW post, the Veterans Council. Oh, the Eastline Veterans Council, they need some of that funding to help provide, you know, pay for the cost of the Memorial Day Parade at the end of May. So if that money's not in, and they're not on the list, they would, you know, be in a difficult situation, they wouldn't have the resources to do it. Because we didn't fund them one year with the thought that they could use that money to the following year, but they use, they do use some of that money for grave markings and flags and so forth like that, so did put them in a hole last year.
Right under the town side, the Water and Sewer, recoding the Boston Post Road water tank, that was mentioned earlier this evening. And when I, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Bregaw about this, and he did tell me that it wasn't just recoding, that there was to be, first of all, a study of the interior of the tank.
Yes.
And I don't see that reflected here in this, it's stated simply as recoding.
It, I can assure you, it, with the conversations that Water and Sewer had, and with the presentation that was made, it is to look at not, not only the outside, but the, the inside of a, of the building, too. And, you know, that's one of the things that Ben North, the utility engineer who's taken Brad's place down at Water and Sewer, pointed out when he made his presentations to the Water and Sewer Commission, that, you know, the inside is, is more important than the outside, as far as making sure that is inspected and so forth like that, too.
In fact, I think when that, when the whole Boston Post Road water tower issue came up, and the first cost estimate was given, it didn't yet include the interior work, and then whoever the Water and Sewer Department got that info from, they gave them additional information, so that actually upped the cost of that project by a few hundred thousand, I think. Joe may know the exact amount.
So the correct amount is the seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, and, and, Joe may actually know the exact amount.
Joe, you, Joe might be, Joe, the plan is to go inside that.
I'm more careful, yes.
Yeah, the plan is to go inside the tank.
Yes, we've already, yeah, we've already actually done some work inside of it, and that also includes that going inside the tank, and there's also cathodic protection as part of that, which protects the outside of the tank, the metal, so. But yes, we are looking inside the tank.
So you have somewhat of a, an appraisal on the cost of this?
Well, it's part, it's part of the seven fifty.
Okay, because I would want to.
And I took Mr. Schultz's number to have the utility engineer reach out to him, but, you know, because we've already looked at the inside of the tank, and there's going to be a little more work with that.
All right, thank you.
In the, in the exhibits, we had to shorthand sometimes for, for space purposes, you know, a particular request, but in the documents from Joe and Water and Sewer, on the, in those documents, which are, you know, are attached to your report way down hundreds of pages later, there is that, and I recall, on that chart, there's an amount given for the interior, I believe.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
So, okay, I just don't have that in front of me.
It's comprehensive, it's not just the outside painting, it's cathodic protection of the whole, of the whole tank, and it's also the inside of the tank.
protection of the whole of the whole tank, and it's also the inside of the tank.
And at one point, when you had, earlier, you had mentioned the possibility of not repainting it, but of wrapping it?
I don't recall that conversation, but did we talk about that?
At some point, yes, that was brought up, and so I want to make
Well, this is, that's the, the utility engineers have looked at it, and that's the, what we had proposed is the best way to, you know, extend the longevity of that tank.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thanks, Joe.
Other questions?
Just, so I have it right here, so this was the resolution that we're looking at tonight, we're only going to be looking at
No, we'll do both resolutions tonight.
We will?
Yes.
Oh, okay. But the funding on the on the second resolution?
Yeah, it, yeah, it's subject to, yeah, and we, and here again, this has all been
Subject to, I got it.
Vetted through the town attorney, too, forth like that, because, you know.
One is what we have on hand, and the other is what we expect to receive.
Yeah, and we do, and here again, it was carefully done to make sure if there was a town priority that needed to be addressed, and the funding now would address it, we put it up there, the, hence, you know, a few of the items.
Another, another good example, the councilors through Youth Services, those got late starts, so their renewal can can wait for the next tranche of money, because one started in October and one started in, actually, February of this year.
Right, and we've already allocated
So they're they're not affected, they'll get, they'll be, you know, they'll get their second year's worth of of funding coming.
Got you.
Yeah.
Other
Well, I would
Go ahead.
I am, I'm willing to vote on the town side, but I don't believe that we've had a great deal of discussion about the community request, and these are both lumped together in the same motion. So in that case, I I will abstain.
So just to clarify, they're actually not in the same motion, so so one, we're doing it at the same time, I hope to do that, but one motion addresses them on, in that the current funding that is on hand can be used to address those needs. And I think Ms. Tracy, Tracy, our attorney, Tracy Collins, wrote a pretty detailed opinion about, and she she created her own chart that was attached to the opinion, and for the various small business nonprofit requests and where they fall. And our own exhibit does rate them and then gives some some backup information as well, so.
Well, my understanding was that we were going to be, A, voting on two separate items, the town needs, and then community service, so to speak, and that there would be further discussion regarding the community grants. So I will abstain tonight, I won't vote against it, but I will abstain.
Okay, any other, no comments, if you wanted to do the
Sure, again, I'll do the first one, Anne, okay.
Well, for my make comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's all right. So I, you know, I took a long time to look through the smaller packet that was provided to us, and then I had the benefit of the thicker packet of all the applications, and I I tried to, you know, correlate the ones that were being approved and not, and and after spending a fair amount of time with it, I think I resolved in my mind that, you know, we appointed this committee, you had a process, there was there was a review of the law and being consistent with it, and my own thought would be unless, I spotted some really glaring abnormality or or something that needed to be corrected, my inclination was, you know, we appointed this committee to accept their findings, rather than to try to micromanage, you know, tweak a hundred bucks here or a thousand dollars there, I don't think that's the role of this panel. When we appointed a committee, it looks like they did a great job, and I didn't see anything that was out of line in my own mind, and so I'm I'm prepared to to approve the resolution as of this.
Well said, Dan.
Thank you.
Very well said, thank you.
Okay, resolve to approve the ARP ad hoc subcommittee recommendations for appropriations of Eastline's American Rescue Plan ARP funds on hand in the amount of $1,060,417.84 in the following amounts and for the following purposes. $461,945, small business and nonprofit requests as per Exhibit 9A of the Subcommittee's report dated March 16, 2022, provided each recipient execute an agreement with the town that the fund shall be used only for its stated purpose, and that those entities which have received prior ARP funds verify in writing the use of said funds before receiving any additional funds. $340,000, garbage truck, Public Works, $150,000, air handler, Town Hall, also Public Works, $12,800, software for emergency planning, Emergency Management Department, $25,000, Darryl Pond Recreation Area Master Plan, Parks and Recreation, $2,659.90, the Town Hall Dropbox, building maintenance, $5,225, fire safety equipment, fire marshal request, $5,865, glass doors and owl camera for a Zoom or otherwise meeting space requested by the library, $25,000, contingency for ARP administrative costs and attorney's fees, $31,922.94, contingency, emergency management pandemic needs. Forward to the Board of Finance for approval, and note this action requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan, any further comments?
Yeah, I did want to make the comment that because I was involved, we talked initially about the small business nonprofit at one time, we were going to have a motion on the individual one, and just for the public record, I have been involved in the American Nation, I have, so, I mean, a small town like this, you're always involved in a lot of different stuff, and I just want to make it clear that I did have involved in the preparation that I hold.
Okay. All those, and you, are you comfortable voting?
I'm comfortable voting, like I said, it's the process, and
Yeah.
Kind of the same mindset that Dan went through, is for all these different light items, I spend a lot of time going through each individual item, and although I couldn't necessarily say how many screws involved were being bought with each one, I could understand this process, which I think I'm not comfortable with.
Okay.
Good recommendations.
Excellent. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain. And the second one, this is for the second phase, which will be town
Right, town oriented. Resolve to approve the ARP ad hox subcommittee recommendations for appropriation of Eastline's American Rescue Plan, parentheses, ARP funds, subject to receipt of said funds in the amount of $2,726,713.40 in the following amounts and for the following purposes. Public Works, upgrades to HVAC at Field Services Building, $270,000. Police Department, switch to state radio communication system, $466,161.34. Parks and Recreation, continue the part-time prevention slash mentoring coordinator position, which began in October of 2021, $55,000. Parks and Recreation, again, continue part-time counselor position at Youth Services, it began February 22 for $20,000. Parks and Recreation, place gave improvements to McCook Point Park and Perittas Park, $150,000. Parks and Recreation, replace all water fountains in parks, $75,000. Parks and Recreation, restroom enhancements in parks, $200,000. Senior Center, Commission on Aging, full-time social worker, $59,475. A joint request, library, senior center, Parks and Recreation, a feasibility study for $38,000. Water and Sewer, upgrade the Niantic Sewer Pump Station, $600,000. Water and Sewer, recoat Boston Post Road water tank, $750,000. And then the last item, contingency for emergency management pandemic needs, which is the continuation of our previous motion, $43,077.6. Forward to the Board of Finance for approval, note this action requires a town meeting.
Is there a second? Seconded by Bill, any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Take care unanimously. Before moving on, I just, again, want to say, the committee, and the fact that we had a lot of community involvement, Mr. Edwards here, Eileen Cahill, another member to the public, someone from a nonprofit, someone from the business community, we tried to cast as big a net, you know, you always look at, if, let's hope we never have to go through this again, but if we did, I think we have it, to make it even better. But unlike a lot of communities, we did seek that input from the community, and we did try to do our best to allow the opportunity for those that felt that they could use some assistance, were able to come forward to us. So thank you all again for your work. Mr. Edwards, I think you can start having some nice to yourself now.
Yeah.
So thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, that includes the business part, we'll move on to ex officia reports. We'll start with you, Roseanne, and work our way down that way.
Okay, zoning meets tomorrow night, nothing unusual from Commission on Aging. Let's see, Monday, next Monday night is Board of Ed, and it's supposed to be my month to cover, and I would be double booked that night, so I'm wondering, I've Commission on Aging, which is at 5:00, Board of Ed is meeting at 5:30, which isn't their usual meeting time, so I'm wondering if someone could cover Board of Ed for me.
I would offer, but I have deliberations with finance that night.
Roseanne, which Monday is it? I'm sorry, it's
Next Monday.
Next Monday, yeah, I can do it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
They, we'll, we'll keep you advised, too, because they might want to, I don't know if they're possibly considering a change, too, because of the fact that they'll, they'll want to be a board of finance, so.
I know.
Anne, we'll make sure you're advised
Yes, okay, thank you.
If there's a change to that.
Wait a minute, they're meeting at 5:00, they're meeting at 5:30 so that they can then go to the Board of Finance.
Well, they always, they always meet early now, that's their normal time for a start, so.
If we hear any updates?
Yeah, we'll let you know. Anything else for Dan, or is that it?
That's it.
Dan?
You know, I don't have a report tonight.
Okay, good. Anne?
Yeah, Eastline Public Library, Board of Trustees, the meeting was March 7, and I attended that, a couple of developments, Christine Giamalis was appointed to the Board of Trustees, there's one other vacancy which may be filled very soon. The library's audit has been completed, they received a good report from Murphy and Company, the auditors, and no issues, but going forward, they're going to be changing auditors as every so many years, that's kind of common practice to do, so there'll be a going up to bid for that. And otherwise, library's very excited about the Eastline History Center, and Lisa gave, you know, some good information on various uses within the building, very pleased that upstairs, second floor of the building, is very, very adaptable to to some of their office needs, so that was, that was good to to learn, and that was about it.
Okay, Ms. Webber? Okay. Moving on to the first select report, I had a conversation with, or last week with Mr. Mansfield about, you know, the re-concern of COVID and so forth like that. Right now, just monitoring it, and if you'll notice, the state is now going to a weekly update. When you look at the report on the Connecticut Department of Health website, it doesn't show that previous day's thing, it's the previous seven days. So over the previous seven days, there is a little bit of an uptick in hospitalizations, 19%, not 19%, 19 people, and a little over a four and a half percent positivity test, but so far, no real concerns from them. You saw we had some good publicity with Senator Blumenthal coming to town advocating that the Amtrak fence be, you know, replaced if possible with as close as possible to the mesh that exists down there now, not the rail, eight-foot rail that they were talking about doing. Amtrak, he said it would be the fall at the earliest before they now do the replacement, and there's no update regarding what it's going to be. I do have a good contact there, and Senator Blumenthal indicated when he was here that he did write a letter, and I think I forwarded, I may have forwarded it to the board, to the CEO and president of Amtrak, and which I said is probably a little more effective than my email to somebody at at Amtrak in the region. I had an interview with, I interviewed a firm today that provides a lot of services, but grant writing is one of the things they do, not so much grant writing, but monitoring. What they do is they keep an eye on grants that would be applicable to a town of our size and for various different things, fire department, what, police departments and building departments, something that would, anything that would come across the screen that might be something that we'd be of interest to. He's going to write up a proposal, because he said usually that entails two hours a month, as far as what we would probably contract for, and he'll get me the fee, but it's 100, he said it'd be about $115 an hour. If we found a grant that we said, yeah, that's something we're really good, we felt we'd like to pursue, then they would, for the same hourly rate, prepare the grant and do the data research for it, too, working with whoever we'd need them to work with at Town Hall for some data. And I said, how long does that usually take? I mean, are we talking now a 40-hour week? He said it usually runs about six to 10 hours tops, because they do it all the time, they know what to do, they're just basically moving forward that. So he's going to get a proposal, and we'll come back to see, because I know, Roseanne, we've all talked about doing miss grants, our staff doesn't really have the time to start researching and then writing them, these are people who do it. And I said, if we get a grant, how much of that do you get? And he said, none, which, what, our hourly rate is what you get. So we'll look forward, I'm looking forward to getting a, he's going to write up something, I should get it back in a couple of days.
On that proposal, oftentimes on grants, there's a space where the person who is the grant preparer can be paid.
Yes, but they, they wouldn't, they would not put any money in there for themselves for that.
So I'm just wondering, though, that if they took money from the grant for preparing it, then they get reimbursed, or we get reimbursed for the cost.
But here again, as he said, you know, this is his business, he said if he does that, and we don't get the grant, he gets nothing. So he said that this has worked very successfully for them, and, you know, he said that they've had expanded base. I've, I've Googled and found out some of the towns he works for, so I'm going to be reaching out to them to check for resource, you know, you know, for, do some resource checking or see how, you know, we can get a recommendation and so forth.
Which sounds very promising.
Well, it is, because, and the thing I'd like to, you know, you didn't want to hear that there'd be some per diem rate plus a percentage, too, of it, too, because he said, you know, with a 10,000 grant, if 25% goes to the grant writer, you know, we lose a lot, and he said, so, you know, it sounded promising. And he said, there's other areas, too, I said, let's just stick with this for right now and move forward. For what we had done tonight, approving this, if Board of Finance approves it next week, we'll have to schedule a town meeting. We'd like to schedule it for the 20th, which would be at our next meeting, mainly because Joe Bregaw, in order to qualify for that $25,000 savings on the truck, the quicker we do it, the better, he doesn't want to lose that, and in a couple of areas, too. So if that's the case, it's approved by finance, we'll schedule a special meeting for Friday morning so that we can get everything done on time and meet all the legalities to have it, and we can do that by Zoom, just to have a quick meeting, only thing is for a call to a town meeting, so just to let you know.
To set the town meeting.
Yeah. To set the town meeting. Bill, Sherwood's going to be here for two things at our next meeting. The facade of the Public Safety Building, it's a type of The facade of the Public Safety Building, it's a type of facility, the cinder block, it's a porous surface. We had a driving rain about a month ago. And because of the angle it was, there was some moisture that came into the building, into the dispatch area, just a little bit by the windows. And Bill has done some research on this. These buildings are noted for this. They require a ceiling to prevent this from happening around the windows and on that whole outer facade. Bill's not an expert in this. He's done some research. Bethel Police, they just built it and they had the same problem. So this is something we're going to have to look at and I think it's something we have to address. Anna's left, but I can mention where, what, what she had to say. We need to obviously have somebody of an expert come in and do a good examination and inspection, someone who's an expert in the field. So we're going to reach out, uh, to some, uh, architect firms that have, that have experts in this field and come back and request an appropriation to deal with, first of all, their analysis to come back and tell us what we have to do to remediate this. Of course, here again, the Public Safety Building, this was not ident, and I want to emphasize this, it was never identified by the architect when they surveyed it prior to the initial cost of this. This is something that has come up in the last month and a half, two months. It is not related to the new roof, definitely not that. So that's all set. But it's something that we need to address. There are some premium dollars remaining from the bonding of the Public Safety Building, which would be able to cover this. And up to a certain point, you know, there is funding to cover the, the remediation of it too, or the ceiling of it. Bill has done a lot of research, but as Bill will say, he, this is not his expertise. We need to have someone come in and tell us what needs to have this done quickly, or not quickly, but properly. You know, so.
Did you say that this had happened in another town?
Bethel had the same, uh, problem. The chief of police said that they had a new building built and that it needed, it requires a seal on it. Bill Share has done all the research. I think what Bill has done is all we really need to go on, but Bill wants to say, no, we need to have an architect stamp on this, there's no question about it. And it's something that has to be done. And it was never identified going into, into this building ever. And here again, you know, this, you know, it needs to be addressed.
Kevin, just a question. The middle school, at one point, a couple of years back, there was an envelope study for, I think, some leak, leakage, but I'm not sure if it was similar, but, you know, with the cinder blocks or porous, I don't know if this, you know, by the entryway, but I think there was some sort of an envelope study.
There was.
So, um...
But this...
I'm wondering, yeah, I mean, along the same lines where the study then helps to do the right, obviously, to do the question.
Oh, yeah, and that's just it. This is something, uh, we want to do right. We just, you know, here again, we've had the driving rain with so forth like that, no problems. But if the, if it's a heavy rain with the wind blowing in the right direction is where you have this happening. It needs to be addressed. We cannot allow that to done, and I have to bring this forward, but, you know, it's just another thing that has presented itself. Apparently these, and Bill Share has done some research, there were a lot of these similar buildings built in the eighties that had this, uh, situation occur and, you know, so. But we have to address that. So I know that's really good news to hear. But anyway, but now we will move on to some better news. Miracle League Gala was last week. They raised, and then a lot of money from that. It was a sellout and because the Phase Two that they plan to do is putting in the bathrooms and playground adjacent to the Miracle League Field. The fellow they had speak there was Stephen Epps. He was a player at UConn who was injured in a car crash and, you know, said, no, that's not going to be down. He's confined to a wheelchair, but he was a member of the, uh, US ParaOlympic curling team this past, uh, last month or a couple of months ago in Beijing. And they finished sixth. And it was just inspiring to hear him speak. I made Dave Putnam cry. I mentioned, I got to speak, I said how, you know, years, I mentioned how he'll be retiring, that years after he's gone, people are going to remember. It was Dave Putnam that provided this opportunity for athletes that would not otherwise be able to have a place to compete. Now they do have a place. And he said, I brought him to tears. So anyway, if anybody gets emails from our baseball players, I don't know if anyone has, I've gotten a couple saying, please support me. There are, each baseball player is out trying to raise $900 each so that they can use that for buying supplies for the team and so forth like that. And this was something they came up to think, to think about how they could help ease the burden on, you know, the cost of outfitting the team and keeping things going. So if you get one, I've gotten a few, so I feel obligated to say yes to them. And last thing is...
Yeah, I know. It was planned ours to you.
I'll forward it to you, yeah. So, well, Mike Salerno's son, Alex, started, so he must have said, oh, he gave me money, so. So, and then, uh, April 23rd is the Boardwalk 5K, uh, this year. So in a couple of weeks, that'll be coming up. So that's it for my, uh, my, uh, report. We have no communications. Any, uh, further public comment? Mr. Schultz, please come up.
Mike Schultz, Lover's Lane, East Line. A question here regarding the roof for the Samuel Smith House. Do you have any more information? It's, it's almost $69,000 roof.
Mike, what I, well...
I mean, is this something that...
Is that all you have?
Is there more, is there more information available for it?
Is that your only question? Because then I, then I can do the, I can't do the Selectors' Response until your comments are done.
I got you, okay. Yeah, I had, uh, the only other concern I had was, uh, it seems like 26, almost $2,700 for a Dropbox is a lot of money. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. The Samuel Smith House, I'll get ahold of, uh, Ben, uh...
Norman?
No, no, no.
Bullock.
Thank you, Ben Bullock. He's basically the head of there. I'll get the information from him and we'll get you the answer to that on the Samuel Smith House. Basically, it's to preserve the roof and so forth. They have a, uh, it's going to be examined ahead of that too. But I'll get, uh, the information from Ben Bullock on that for you. Regarding the Dropbox, this is one similar to what they have out there for, uh, the, the voting one like that. You want it secure so nothing can get in there and then it can't be removed. It has to be all such, because that's where people will be asked after hours to drop their tax payments and so forth. So actually, we thought it was going to be more at first. We thought it was going to be 4,000, but Sandy did a really good job of getting it down to 2,600 because, yeah.
They don't cost much.
Okay, if, so I've gotten the Selectors' Response there. That'll complete our business. We need to go into executive session. So is there a motion to move into executive session to discuss Hathaway Farms LLC?
Some of.